And I said, oh, no, 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 I have the car in the garage most of the time. Now, I'm thinking it's cold. You know, I could look down at my office, I could look down at my caravan. Hell, I'm sleeping. Bad decision.
Nope.
Hey, I'm not even waiting for next year.
All right, I've got five o'clock. I called a meeting to order today, Monday, uh, January third, twenty twenty two. Uh, roll call. We have a selectman Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, town clerk Katie Dandiran, town attorney James Collier, and town manager Jesse Dunbar. Um, Howdy did call me earlier and said he would not be attending tonight.
I'll make a motion to excuse Howdy from tonight's meeting.
Sorry.
Been moved and seconded to excuse Howdy from tonight's meeting. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, um, adoption of agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to change? Okay, approval of minutes. We have the minutes from Monday, December twentieth.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, December twentieth, twenty twenty one?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from Monday, December twentieth, twenty twenty one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, next we have warrants. We have warrant sixty one for two hundred twenty-two dollars and eighty-three cents, sixty-two for ten thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars and sixty-eight cents, sixty-three for ninety-three thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and eighteen cents, sixty-four for ten thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and two cents, sixty-five for twenty-eight thousand seven hundred four dollars and seven cents.
I'll make a motion to approve warrants sixty-one through sixty-five.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve warrant sixty-one through sixty-five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
I abstain because my business is part of warrant sixty-three.
Okay. All right, now we have regular business. Um, public hearing date and location. I since, since our last meeting, I found out that my, um, FPT, I have echo training in Fort Lauderdale is the week of the twenty-fourth, so I will not be here. I'm flying out on the twenty-third and will be gone all week. So either, um, either I will just not be available for the meeting or, um, we could move it up if you wanted to, to, you know, Thursday, Friday beforehand and do it then. Up to whatever, whatever you guys wanna do. I just.
You could do it by Zoom, too.
I really don't wanna run a, a
Yeah.
three hour Zoom meeting from a hotel room in Florida, if I can help. I mean, it sounds so appealing, but.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Was that, uh, in conflict the week before with, uh?
Yeah, I think there was a problem.
I think that was in conflict. That's why we ended up being.
Yeah.
The eighteenth though, wasn't it?
I know. I know we had asked, I asked at the time, Jamie, if the eighteenth was, would work by Zoom, and she said no. For them attending, um, we only really discussed the eighteenth. I don't know if the whole week is then for them as well.
Can we check with them?
I, I know.
You'd have to make your decision tonight to advertise on the time.
And then. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, the twentieth is Thursday, the twenty-first is Friday. Um, I mean, I.
I know there's some negotiation on the date. I would probably kind of try to stay away from moving it without some input myself.
I agree. Can we, can we do it with four or?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I just wanted to, if you guys were comfortable with it or not, so that's.
Oh, I'd wanna say thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
Well, we know who the assistant chair is, so.
That was kind of my point, yeah.
Well, Jamie's in Florida. Did we decide if this is going to be Zoom or not? We need to decide that also.
I'm fine with it.
You don't want, you need to decide.
I mean, e- even so, I, I, Zoom's probably not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I got no problem running a business in, in, but, um, I, I think. I don't know.
I can go either night, whatever.
Are you okay totally missing it then? Totally, totally?
Oh, it's fine with, you know, it's fine with me. I just didn't know if it's, you know, I wanna, I, uh,
Well, I don't know question, right, but, I mean.
Whatever, you know, I wanna do whatever we need to as a board, so, um, if you want, that's why I'm giving you this, the notice. We still have three weeks or whatever it is to that meeting, so, um, if you wanna do it ahead of time, I just can't, you know, I can't do it that night, so.
If we did change it to the Thursday, which is the tw- yeah, and it is Zoom, then all parties should be able to attend if they want to, right? I mean, it's pretty sorta.
They should, I don't, I don't know what her schedule is.
You don't like to change the date?
I, I know there's quite a bit of negotiation at the meeting on what date worked and. I, I don't have, I don't personally don't care what day it is. Actually, I might have something on.
I thought, I, I thought that whole week was out for her.
Yeah, I thought she said something about Martin Luther King's birthday week. She was doing something, I'd rate it.
I know she was volunteering.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With work, I don't.
I didn't know if that was the week or that day. Yeah, okay.
I would really hate to reschedule it, have her not be able to make it after.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think both sides need to be able to.
Yeah. So, I guess going along that line, I think I'd stick with the same date.
Yes.
I'd agree with you.
This is my dad that if you, if you have it either hybrid, like you can have it here and then have it on Zoom, or you can do it the other way. But if I was the other members of the board, I wouldn't let the chair off that easy if it was, if it was Zoom and you zoomed in. Practically speaking, if this is gonna be a bugaboo for the next six months, and it's gonna be very controversial, I was the other members of the board, I didn't want the chair to be on the record. And that's just me because you gotta wear it together for the next six months, you know, creates a controversy.
Yeah, and that's why I was bringing this up now, so that there's.
I don't care which way you vote, but you should be united. I don't, clinically, it's better to have y'all have your say.
So after that public hearing, we decide to extend the moratorium or not to extend the moratorium, so Jamie wouldn't be here to vote for that.
That's what I see as a problem.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Could you make, could you do it Zoom if you had to, or?
Uh, the only thing I would, it would be, it's gonna be difficult no matter what, but I'm not sure when the classes get done, and usually it's, it's hard to pinpoint a, um, they're not on an exact schedule, so it's, I mean, they start at seven thirty, um, some days they take a longer lunch and go until five, four thirty, so I, you know, if we push it off.
Don't worry, it's, it'd, the night, it would be a long night here too.
Yeah.
It could be sometimes.
You think so?
Um.
I just know I can't cancel this because it's, there's, um, only once a year that I can do it. I haven't been, it's been ten years since I've been re-up for it, so I have to do it.
I was just gonna add that you wouldn't need to, as James, to be there for the entire meeting, as long as you were there to vote.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
That's the important part at the end.
Practically speaking, as long as you had the, you voted, then you, you, I think in the long run, it'll take a lot less criticism, 'cause otherwise you're gonna, you seem to abduct the issue.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that I can hear both sides of everything before I make my decision too. That's my, you know.
So then maybe we really need to think about tweaking the date.
Um, what would be the, I was gonna say, what if we,
Which is difficult, I mean, that's.
Is there any way to contact, um, both parties, like by email or something to?
I can try.
And then we could move on to another topic for a little bit?
Yep, I can.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. That sound good to everybody? Skip over parade the second, just see if he gets a.
Sure.
And it could go.
I believe that's pretty much the outside of what we can do. Is it the twenty-ninth that it expires? Is that correct?
Yeah, what is the twenty-ninth? I can't even see.
Saturday.
That's a Saturday, okay. Yeah, and I won't fly back in until, uh, Saturday morning.
Okay.
So I could do Saturday. If anybody wanna do Sa- I could do Saturday evening.
I'm busy that, yeah.
Okay. Offering.
Busy not doing this.
And the latest that week we could do it is the twenty-first, is that?
I'm literally, it's, it's early, it's, it was the twentieth because of notice, requirement of notice.
The recent point.
Okay.
So you couldn't, you can't do it before the twentieth.
Before, okay, gotcha.
So you have two days that week, or the, well, no, the following week would be over the, um, time, so.
Well, we could, you know, you're not gonna be here any other week, so that wouldn't make any difference.
Yeah. Yep. All right, um, you guys wanna move on then? Just table this for a minute and we'll.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, recycling, um, is our next thing, and I'll let you, I know you're multitasking, Jesse. But I would like to hear your summary on everything we have.
So, recycling, um, there, my memo, um, in your packet explained two options that I looked into, um, after you guys authorized me to research recycling options while the, uh, fiberite plant is still closed and, uh, handled. I also provided you a memo tonight with some new information that I got from Lee Worcester from EMR after I prepared your packets last week. Um, basically, EMR is offering the town a single sort recycling program at its facility in Southwest. Um, currently, the town and the other towns are on a all-in-one bin program, so all the garbage, all the recycling goes in one bin and goes up to either Park or June for Ridge. Um, they are offering a single sort recycling where they would, Tremont would have a designated bin at the facility for all the recycling to go into. Um, I believe the details, I didn't have a what is included in that for recycled materials. And part of the agreement is a recycling fee per month regardless of how much, um, tonnage is recycled. Transportation fee per trip to take it up to, uh, Old Town, and a processing center fee of seventy-five dollars a ton. Um, that's the fee that the seller will charge EMR to bring it up, so they're just passing on the same fee to the town. Um, the questionable, um, amounts that we don't know until you start recycling is how many trips or how many tons, um, it's gonna generate. He had given me an estimate of if you recycle twenty percent of our municipal waste, that that would probably generate two trips a month. Um, twenty percent is fairly high compared to what was recycled last time Tremont did recycling. Um, I got some numbers from Perry Donovan, and it looked like it ranged from on the low end forty tons a year to a high end of around seventy tons a year. Um, his estimate, if you did twenty percent, is a hundred and eighty, sixty tons of them, so you're not, you wouldn't come vote for that. I would expect it most likely to be one trip per month. Um, he will be offering the same program to Southwest Harbor, Trenton, and Cranberry Islands. Um, there may be some savings on the trip charge if any of those other towns sign on, um, and they may not, um. The second option was from EcoMaine, which would be an option here on site like you had before. Um, that gets picked up and trucked to Portland. Um, I provided some information in your memo on, um, information from Lemoine, that's the system they use, and I think they're fairly comparable tonnage wise to what we would be generating. Um, I think it is the more costly of the two, um, basically completely based on tons, um, and trucking. And the trucking, um, Lemoine pays around thirty-six hundred dollars a month just in trucking, um, so they paid around thirty-six thousand last year for their recycling. Um, also, in the meantime, you'll see in the memo on your desk that, um, Lee pointed out, he believes there's a clause in our contract that does not allow us to contract with somebody else for recycling, um, but it all has to go to EMR for the contract. Um, as I said, I think the non-EMR option is the price of the two anyways, so, um, not concerned with that, but. Got any questions?
And also the number, you might have already mentioned that, but the fee, the fee should be five sixty-five, not, um, one thousand eighty-two?
Oh, yes. Yep. Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Seems kinda counterintuitive anyway to be trucking your trash an extra four hours round trip.
Yes.
To rec- to recycle.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah, I, I think EMR is a pretty logical choice to me. I would much rather they go with local as well.
Yes.
I was.
Yeah.
Just seems like we've had a bunch of different options and nothing seems to work that well.
Yeah. And the other benefit is we don't have to look at dumpsters outside of the.
Yes, yep, exactly.
Right, so the dumpster is there, not here.
Probably, it's kind of a no brainer for us.
Yeah.
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 And that's, I mean, EMR is where residents are taking their trash if they're not, not trying to pick up, so
And, yeah.
I think it would probably generate a little more usage perhaps if you have a different type of vehicle here, um.
Yeah.
And regarding the budget, um, I mentioned in the memo, projections look like, um, the solid waste is gonna be under budget by the end of the year, by about twenty-three thousand at this point. Um, so if you're looking at six months of this program, you're probably looking at somewhere around six, seven thousand dollars between now and February.
Hmm.
Yeah, and, and some of that waste is gonna come off the other tonnage too, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I say go for it.
I say, I say EMR.
Yeah, I'll hear you.
I motion to authorize town manager to accept the recycling proposal from EMR.
Second.
Um, do you wanna also say, like, as amended, so that we, the contract would be, 'cause he does, or do you, or do you not need to say that?
Um, you might as well.
Say as amended, okay.
Yeah.
You guys go to that on your motion, your second, okay. Uh, so, uh, there's been a motion and seconded to authorize the town manager
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
to accept the recycling proposal from EMR as amended. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? All right, next we have the small equipment purchase. Everybody has a max. Package, what Jesse's done for research.
I like the Kubota, obviously, price and everything. Um, if we decided to go with one of these three options.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for used stuff, I don't, I mean, that's still an option. But then you don't know what you're getting.
Yep.
And I was looking at some of the prices of used stuff and we'd probably ma- maybe save ten grand.
Maybe.
Maybe, you know, and that's not gonna be with, like, nice heat cab, you know.
Maybe. I've seen stuffs higher now. Yeah. No, I think that, um, I agree, I like the Kubota, um, option. The only thing I fear with either the Kubota or the John Deere is that we had that small Kubota here before, and the guys didn't tend to use it that much because they, I don't think they cared for it. They thought it was more like a lawnmower than it was a, um, a tractor. And I just wouldn't wanna see us purchase something that's borderline too small and have them not use it. I'd rather spend a little bit more and get something that's used, you know, a lot. Yeah.
Well, the, the only other thing I was thinking too is, will the loader load the trucks on those? Will it reach high enough? I couldn't find the specs on any of them, on how high it would do it. I actually looked online on all of them. I couldn't find that.
No, the, um.
My thirty-eight hundred would barely do it, and that's a twice the size machine as that.
Okay. That's what I was wondering.
The Bobcat one will, 'cause it extends.
Well, yeah, I thi- I thought you saw that.
Yeah, but the other two, I don't.
Okay. And the other ones aren't getting mowing decks with them anyway, is that right?
No, that's.
So there's gonna be no plan to mow with them at all?
No.
'Cause that was the one disadvantage I saw to the, uh, the Bobcat, is you couldn't put a mower on it.
Yep, no, um, I mentioned that to Troy, and he said that his preference would be not to mow with a cab, 'cause it's.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, did he have a preference on the, on?
His, his preference was the Bobcat. He felt it was the best choice for the town long range, um, started lasting, you know, ten plus years, um.
Mm-hmm.
That was his opinion, um, he did.
But you can't get the snow blower part now on Bobcat?
The snow blower part, correct, um, that was coming in in March or April. Um, they can use the bucket on all three options upon this winter, um.
Did they have one that we could use, or one that we could, li- in a lease, or, or however you put it, uh?
The blow.
The blower part, just that.
He didn't specify.
Okay, sometimes they have them in their rental fleet, so.
They do have a rental department, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'd tend to, the Bobcat's the one that really caught my attention. I thought maybe more useful, but it's definitely a lot more money than the Kubota.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure it's worth it, what we'd be doing, but that was, that was the one thing I thought you could load, you know, whether you could load the trucks with any of them or not, and I didn't, I didn't expect to be able to, but I couldn't, had all kinds of specs on them, but how high, how high you could load anything, so.
And, uh, the thing with the Bobcat, I watched a video on it just to see, you know, if it, check it out a little bit, and
Yeah.
it is, I mean, with Articulate, you turn it around itself, so I think you're more apt to use it for other stuff,
Yeah, yeah.
like cleaning up dirt inside the road, you know, whatever. They're, they're probably gonna use it more than they would,
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
um, that smaller one for other things. Uh, I think just for, just for snowblowing and just for cleaning sidewalks and, um, either the tractors will work just fine, but if you're trying to get m- multiple things out of it.
Does the, uh?
Yeah, that's what I was.
Can you get a sweeper for?
Yes.
Yep.
The Bobcat?
Yep.
There was a whole list of attachments that I looked online with it. I looked at all of them, just to see what they.
You have, you have horizontal for machine, it would be.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yeah.
No, I guess my biggest thing is that, is it gonna get used more than just, you know, the sidewalks and stuff, and if it does, then yeah, great.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
But.
Um, I know it will, as in, you have the, um, there's some areas in the salt sand shed that the current, um, equipment can't get to as far as, like, sweeping salt over the corners and near some bare face, um, either of these three, um, would be able to get in that area, um. And I think if we purchase a broom at some point, which I think we deeply intend, um, there's where all the sweeping of parking lots, um, and even intersections if needed, um, between when it swept, um, the streets as well.
Now, did that, uh, Bobcat, one thing I didn't look is to see if that had air conditioning, 'cause all of them have heat, and I just wasn't sure if that one had, it didn't say on.
Says heated, heated comfort package.
Yeah. Yep, I'm not sure. I just didn't know if that would be a, 'cause if you're out in the summertime too, you know, it's gonna be hot in that cab, no matter what it is, yeah.
I know the tractors do not, have they seen.
Okay. It probably doesn't. In Southwest Harbor, how long have they had their Bobcat one?
Uh, they got it this fall. They traded it in there to the whole Bobcat, um.
Oh, so they unedited that one?
No, they got it sometime this fall, but, um, they really seemed to like it, mm-hmm.
Yep.
Troy went off, we went off and, for cycle work, I think.
They, they traded their Skids gear for, yeah, and they use it all the time, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yep, and they use it for all their sidewalks and the winter, um, I don't think they've used it in anything else yet, because when they done it, yeah. They have a broom attachment, a couple buckets, and a plow attachment and a ball. That, all of those attachments for their Skids gear fit them.
Yeah, and I think you'll probably use the plow more with any of these than you would any, than the snow blower, because if you get, uh, two inches of slosh and stuff like that, I looked, every one of them come with it, you know, you just tilt them manually ahead of time and
Yeah.
clean them right off, and you're not gonna do much with a snow blower with that.
Yep, sounds all right.
Mackenzie, what do you think about?
Hey, you know, I like me a Bobcat.
It's got the prettiest logo.
You guys talk about tractors and dirt. I'm like, whatever you guys say, I finally have gear.
Tractor and dirt.
Right?
Not paying attention, 'cause we're talking about snow.
Oh, I don't pay any attention, that is whatever you guys want, fine.
The sidewalks?
Yeah.
Couple of.
Mr. Chairman, is it true you have sidewalks in here?
Yes, we do. We have sidewalks.
The blow.
And part of our, um, part of our deal when we did the sidewalk, when the sidewalks, they were a grant, correct? Uh, part of it was a grant, uh, I think Chris had told us before, and we had to maintain them, and.
Sidewalks?
Cause we were part of the project, and we agreed to have some of it connected to.
Yeah. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, which is in front of my cabinet.
Yeah.
That was part of the.
Mm-hmm. No, we need to have a way, just a, whatever way, I don't, I don't care, I guess which way it is, but.
I'm okay with whatever you guys decide. I think probably the, the, yeah, the Bobcat would be a little more universally, you know, useful. I mean, I'm s- thinking of my own use and what I was, if I was doing that type of thing, that's the one I probably would go for.
Yeah, as long as it gets used, uh.
And it looks, looks like they're offering us a pretty good price on it too.
I, uh, the municipal discount.
Yeah.
I don't mind having a picture of this.
Yeah.
It's pretty good.
Mm, yeah.
So, Wesen, you like it or?
I love Bobcats.
Yeah.
I'd wanna make sure that it, that we've got the bucket with it, um, and the snow blower, if they didn't have that option right now, if we could, you could take one out of the rental fleet or something, but I really think the plow option should be on there because, um, I think you really will use that more than you ex- you think you're gonna use it.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially if they have a plow now and they don't have snow blower.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I could do all one and no problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't see as why it, we couldn't do unless we got a foot of snow or foot and a half of snow, then it's probably gonna take care of it just fine.
Yeah. And it comes with a radio.
Yeah.
There you go.
See?
Actually, I was gonna ask about that. That's a pretty expensive radio.
Yeah, yeah.
No radio.
Do you want to, uh, have the price updated with that stuff on it, you know, to, to be exactly what we need before we made the decision, or, I, I know, my biggest fear, I guess, is just that, with availability now. I mean, you can, you can think about something for two days and it's long gone, and stock is gonna be in in six months, so.
Right, I mean, um, with that one, um, it was going to be a ninety-day, um, wait for that, um, which is common apparently, um, for the Bobcat, and he said, he called me back a couple days later and said that they had one coming in for the rental fleet, which they will sell us if we want, um, so there probably is a fairly short timeline on when they, we want to sell it.
Yeah.
Is this the plow, the bolt-on cutting edge?
I believe the bolt-on cutting edge is for the.
Snow blower, right?
Snow blower.
Yeah, I think.
I was gonna say it's a cheap plow.
Yeah? Okay.
Okay.
You could plow with the bucket too.
Might be for the bucket, Eric. It says forty-four inches and that's what the utility bucket is too.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't, whatever you guys, I really, doesn't, doesn't matter.
Well, that's where the John Deere is on that one. Well, I guess there's a broom quoted on the John Deere though, wasn't there, for the deers?
Well, the John Deere has a broom, a blower, and a blade, blades, plow.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd almost, I, I would think probably a blade would actually be more useful than a blower anyway, too.
Mm-hmm.
You could, you could do most of it.
Yep. I was gonna say, if you wanna, um, if you wanna hold off on the blower.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
You can make a motion to purchase it with a, some plow, and the price not to exceed this price.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that sounds fine, then. If they're not, if they haven't got a p- a snow blower available anyway.
It's gonna be a half. I guess it's gonna be half the, at least half the cost of a snow blower, if you like that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if they're not gonna have it in anyway.
Mm-hmm.
And they could try it for a season and see how it works without the blower.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do, I, I'm all about saving money, but if you look at the, um, horsepower is on these two.
For the weight, do, did you compare the weight of the machines?
Yeah, no, I know, and you're.
I mean, that's, you know, that's twice as.
Yeah, you're two totally different.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, I I I know it's a little more money, but it looks to me like it's probably a little better value.
Mm-hmm.
At least what we're gonna be doing.
Like I said, if it's, if it's something that the crew won't use or doesn't, doesn't really care for, then it won't get used that much and then it's just a thirty thousand dollar piece of equipment sitting there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, we're pretty much in agreement then for the Bobcat with the plow blade instead of the blower?
Yep.
And not to exceed that price, that quarter price?
Yep.
Okay, and then we need to deal with the purchasing policy.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, I'll make a motion anyway, we can discuss it afterwards. Make a motion to waive the purchasing policy and award the equipment purchase to um Jordan Equipment
Jordan.
for the Bobcat L twenty eight small articulated loader, uh replacing the snow blower on the quote with a plow blade, total price not to exceed forty four thousand two hundred twenty two dollars and ninety eight cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to uh authorize a town manager to it, to enter into a contract.
Uh waive the purchasing.
No, waive the purchasing policy and award the equipment purchase to Jordan Equipment. Um Bobcat L twenty eight small articulating loader with a bucket and blade and no snow blower attachment at this time, um with a price not to exceed forty four thousand two hundred twenty two dollars and ninety eight cents. Sound about right?
Sounds good.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, town managers, or have you heard anything back from anybody here? Actually, we could do our executive session first too, if we have deals.
Sure, I'm gonna shift down the answer, but one year.
Okay.
Alright, are you up to?
Town managers, a more.
Alright, major emphasis in the last two weeks has been uh doing research on the small equipment purchase um and FY twenty three budget work. I have um been doing meeting follow-up from your last meeting. I've met with a resident regarding some drainage issues um with the town per updated the fee schedule per your last meeting, followed up on nonprofit funding requests, worked um on coordinating to find a secretary to take minutes for the planning board, um ordered winter sand and salt, emailed um EMR regarding recycling, contacted an electrician about the emergency lights here at the town office and visited Public Works in Southwest with Troy, looked at the Bobcat machine and conducted the monthly check at Pacific Hall. Office staff, um the clerk was busy with sending foreclosure notices for FY twenty and completing the BMD audit and the staff was busy with park pass sales and a lot of uh end of year customers last week. Public Works was busy treating roads, repairing the John Deere bucket, uh repairing the spinner on truck one, tree removal on Dodge Point, mixing salt and sand in the sand shed, uh meeting me out on um rum road about drainage, cutting ice back on the Shore Road, washing all the equipment after the storms, maintenance on the equipment after the storms and assisting with the sand delivery. The harbor master was busy with sanding, road treatment, um co- uh coast guard testing, captain's license work, working with an owner on a uh boat that's broken down tied up at the wharf, uh emailed the uh camera provider about an issue with the camera at the wharf, had the roll-off emptied at the wharf, had the dumpster removed from Seale Cove. He finished work on the John Deere bucket uh with Public Works, uh helped repair sander three, cleaned off the boat and took it to town hill for the winter service and replaced some decking boards at the wharf. And over the next couple weeks, I am going to continue FY twenty three budget work and um proceed with this purchase on the equipment that you just offered us.
Alright, thank you, Jesse. Suggestions for the next meeting?
Uh one thing that's come up on the sustainability committee is the uh rules surrounding the r- um requirements for memberships, probably needs to be modified. So if we could put that on the next meeting's agenda, we can kind of discuss that.
Yep.
It's nothing major, but it just.
Yes, yep.
Current makeup's not complying with it.
Alright, um and date of the next meeting?
Uh I'll make a motion to confirm the date of the next meeting for Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty two at five P M at the town office.
Sir.
It's been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty two, five P M at the town office. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Wanna do executive sessions first?
The, uh no, she just go back to the twentieth is fine.
Twentieth is fine, okay. Uh did you email both um both people?
Uh no, I only emailed one. I knew had an issue with the eighteen.
Okay.
Okay, the only problem I've got is a comprehensive plan meeting that night.
Oh no.
The twentieth.
And we both have a problem.
Yeah, my twentieth.
Gosh.
No.
I'm okay with that.
We'll be here, it's fine, it's fine.
Yeah. Sorry to be a pain.
No, that's okay. I think this is something we gotta deal with, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I do wanna make sure that both sides can.
Yeah.
I can see if I can get the thing to, I know the other side is, should be, yeah.
I'll be there for you guys, I'm not aware of this.
Yeah.
So if it's the twentieth, it's just.
I feel about it.
I'll be.
Do the twenty first, what better to do on Friday night?
We're fun times.
We should start doing these meetings at five A M. Better put my schedule.
I'll start by now, Eric.
Yep.
Not in the summer. You don't get going that early. I see those boats when they move.
Oh yeah.
They merge.
You haven't even opened your first eyelid when I'm headed out of here.
This time you, you're probably right.
Do you wanna do executive session then, Jesse, and then we'll come back out?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, uh next we have an executive session titled consultation with legal counsel.
I'll make a motion that the board go into an executive session pursuant to one M R S four oh six, four oh five six E for consultations between the board and its attorney concerning the legal rights and duties of the board in regards to town contracts and related matters.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session for consultation with legal counsel, as read by Mackenzie. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Do you wanna invite Katie in? No, okay, Katie, Katie says I'm out.
I don't need to be here.
She, she doesn't like us.
Right.
Educated people.
Well, I just stutter sometimes.
Good friend, you can add lips.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes he adds things and I giggle and.
Okay, we are out of executive session at, I've got six twenty two.
Okay.
Now we have an executive session uh titled town manager evaluation.
I make a motion to find that public discussion of these personal matters could be reasonably expected to cause damage to the employee's reputation and or to violate the employee's privacy rights and therefore could to go into executive session to discuss the employment, appointment, assignment, duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, discipline, resignation and or dismissal of individual or group of public officials, appointees or employees as permitted by one M R S A four oh five point six point A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session under the title of town manager evaluation, as read by Kevin. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we out of executive session. Um now we will roll back to the regular business, um public hearing location and date. And you have.
So yes, um both, at least one representative from both sides of the issue could confirm the twentieth is fine.
Okay. Yep.
If you want to move next to the town.
Okay.
And not via Zoom, right?
Yes, I think.
Okay, that's been decided. Yeah, that was the only question I had.
Yeah.
Okay, I think that's a good idea.
Yep.
Okay, um I'll make a motion, or hello.
That's.
Alright, I.
Get the right page here, sorry, you got it, Eric.
Yeah, I'm motioning to hold the uh January twentieth public hearing on possible extension of the two thousand twenty one campground moratorium ordinance uh via Zoom.
Sir.
It's been moved and seconded to hold the January twentieth, twenty twenty two public hearing on the possible extension of the twenty twenty one campground moratorium ordinance via Zoom. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, I think that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?